Let's call this August 12th meeting of the Pona City School Board to order. Join me in the flag asleep.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Brett. Play with me. Father, we want to thank you for all of your blessings that you've bestowed on us each and every day. We sometimes take the day-to-day things for granted. Please help us to understand the importance of those wonderful gifts that you give us. It's the beginning of a new school year in our district. We ask that you be with our administrators, our teachers, support staff, parents, and students as we all prepare to welcome our students to this new school year. Keep them safe on their way to school, protect them while at school, and then again on their way home. And we pray that this norm is an everyday occurrence throughout the school year. We want to thank you for our men and women of the armed forces, firefighters, law enforcement, or other emergency responders as they all serve and protect our citizens. We ask this in your name. Amen.
Thank you, Brett. Be seated, please. Let's do the roll call, Jan.
Okay. David Kincaid.
Here.
Don Newsom. Robin Riley.
Here.
Judy Truitt.
Present.
Nancy Zemrashie.
Here.
Next item is presentation and recognitions. We have none, so we'll go on to public comments. We have no public comments, so we'll go into probably the majority of tonight's meeting, the superintendent's report concerning the testing scores.
Okay, that's right. This is probably going to be the longest part of the meeting, but we've got lots of data for you and lots of comparisons for you. And I'd rather get over here where I can stand and use my little clicker if need be. So, we did get our confirmed OSTP. That's our Oklahoma State Testing Program Proficiency Rates. And I ran a chart to compare these to the state. And you can see, we start 3rd grade all the way through 8th grade, ELA. We have 5th grade science, 8th grade science. Then I have the statewide proficiency rate, the PCPS proficiency rate, and the difference. And I don't know why the blue's making little sparkly things on stage.
Glitter, glitter.
Okay. I'm not sure why the blue's making little sparkly things, but that's at state proficiency or above. And you can see where, oh, sorry. You can see where we are in ELA math, minus 3 off the state. Math in 3rd grade, minus 4. ELA 4th, minus 1. This was our shining star at the elementary level. We were 12 above the state level in 4th grade math. And I'll show you a comparison of just that in a bit. 5th grade ELA, minus 6 off the state. 5th grade math, minus 4 off the state. And then, science, we were way below the state. And we're going to talk about science. We're going to look at what we do with science and maybe make some changes in our current curriculum or enhance what we already do. But we'll take this year to look at it. Our data's just not showing a lot of growth and steadily declines. And I'll show you that information in a bit. 6th grade, and then I'm just going to draw a line between these because now we go to junior high. 6th grade ELA, we're 5% above. 6th grade math, we're 2% above the state. Our 7th grade ELA, we are 2% below the state. And I will tell you that four of our five ELA teachers in 7th grade were new last year. And the 5th one was our accelerated teacher. Okay? 7th grade math, way above the state at 16%. 8th grade ELA, we were even with the state. 8th grade math, 6% above the state. And 8th grade science, 7% below the state. Now, this is from our 2019 testing results. As we completed testing in April of this year. We do not have a school report card yet. The state says that we should have one about November. Last year, we did not get our 18 report card data until the spring of 19. So hopefully, we will have that information sooner. I've talked to you about this a lot. The poverty rate correlates a lot with our test scores. And I've got these broken down in 3rd grade by grades in ELA and math. And then I've got the free and reduced rates for each of our sites. And I've got them color-coded by site. No specific reason for the color. I just tried to show different colors. And I actually shared this information with the curriculum committee last week, so I'm sharing with the entire board today. If you'll take a look at our ELA results, really, not many of our sites are out of the peer group. Pretty much stack up with the exception of Union and Garfield had a flip. And that was our only anomaly in regard to the poverty rate and our ELA results. If you'll take a look, that's the state score. So Roosevelt tied with the state. Trout and Woodlands were above the state. And then we had Garfield, Union, Liberty, and Lincoln below the state average. As far as math goes, we had Lincoln out of their peer group with 34% proficiency. Actually, Lincoln and Liberty and Garfield and Union were actually out of their peer group if you compared to the poverty rate as far as math in 3rd grade. Any questions there? Okay, moving on to 4th grade. In their same peer group, we have Trout and Woodlands. The state was at 30% in ELA. And you can see where Trout and Woodlands proficiency rate came in. Roosevelt, Union, Garfield, Liberty, and Lincoln were split, were switched. But you know, there's not a lot of difference in their poverty rate. So sometimes you remain within your same peer group, but may have a flipside score. As far as math, and if you'll remember back on the first slide, math, 4th grade math was our shining star at the elementary where we scored 12% above the state. You can see where the state fell. Garfield was our only site that scored below the state average in 4th grade math. And Liberty was way out of their peer group as far as math goes. Liberty and Lincoln, for that matter. 5th grade, out of their peer group was Roosevelt. State average was 35. Way out of their peer group was Trout. Garfield, Liberty, and Lincoln, about as would be expected. Same thing with math, with Roosevelt, out of the peer group quite a bit, 16% above Woodlands. The state average was 30. Garfield was out of their peer group. Trout was out of their peer group. And Union and Liberty and Lincoln were pretty close. I will say that our scores overall in 5th grade were our lowest at the elementary level. And we knew that. We weren't surprised at that. We have our principal PLC once a month, and we track our STAR data that correlates with the state testing. And we know that our STAR data correlates because it came out just as predicted. We made some changes at Trout. She wasn't getting the results in either ELA or math on her STAR results. And her teachers had departmentalized for the first time the first semester. And it just wasn't working. She made a bold decision. If it's not working, you've got to change what you're doing. And she moved the teachers back to self-contained classrooms. At that point, we don't know that there was a lot of change in the results. However, she will start the school year in self-contained classrooms. And there's a lot of research on self-contained classrooms with our elementary students. There's a lot of cross-curricular discussion in self-contained classrooms in that the brain just isn't ready to departmentalize until they're older or like at the secondary level.
Was Trout the only school that departmentalized?
I believe that Lincoln did in math and reading. Is that right, Terry?
Yes. Roosevelt does too.
Roosevelt, and you'll see in the results, they had some really high growth and some really high scores. At Roosevelt, we have one teacher that teaches math and science and one teacher that teaches ELA and social studies. And I actually visited with one of those teachers today. And you've heard me say this before. Our teachers that are master teachers that get results year after year after year get the same results year after year after year, successful results. And we do have one of our most master teachers at Roosevelt in 5th grade. Now, this is a comparison from 18 to 19. And I color-coded again, and I'll show you what I did in the 19 column. If the school increased from 18, I color-coded it blue. If they decreased, I color-coded yellow, I'm sorry, red. If they stayed even, I color-coded yellow. And this is 3rd grade ELA comparison. The state improved, and four of our sites did. Union and Liberty went down in 3rd grade ELA. And Lincoln remained constant at 19%. Then in math, 3rd grade, it was a checkerboard. Woodlands up, Trout down. The state was up from 18. Roosevelt was down. Lincoln up, Liberty down. Garfield up, Union down. Probably the most significant move was Union coming in at the bottom. Lincoln and Liberty are out of their peer group. 4th grade, we'll start with ELA. Trout went up from the previous year. Woodlands went down. And you can see they traded places. Well, actually Roosevelt came in 2nd last year. Roosevelt dropped to 3rd. They went down. State went down. Union went down. Garfield went down. Lincoln went up. From 15% to 18%, just could be one or two students that gained proficiency, which will take any day of the week. And then Liberty remained constant. And if you'll remember, 4th grade was our grade in which we had the most gains toward outperforming the state. And that was in math. And all of our sites increased, including the state. The state, you know, is just 1, so basically remained constant. And that was Garfield. And they only went down by 2%, which could just be one or two students that weren't proficient. Then here's our math, our 5th grade comparison. And I told you that we knew we weren't going to do well in 5th grade by our STAR data. And we didn't. Even the state went down. Every one of our elementary sites went down in ELA or reading. Not a lot of change. Garfield, Union went up, but they still, in the ranking, but they still went down compared to their score from last year. In math, Roosevelt definitely went up and took the lead in the district, which is out of their peer group. Woodlands, Garfield, and then again Trout out of their peer group. Union, and then Liberty and Lincoln. Now Liberty, if you'll notice, went up. But this was, if you'll remember, last year, they only had one student proficient in 5th grade. That has to come up.
Did the state change the bar from 18 to 19 on ELA? I mean, that does not look good. The whole column of red.
No, it doesn't. No, they didn't. In fact, the bar has been changed for a long time. We've never been able to compare apples to oranges, but we have been able to this time. But if you look at the amount they're off, I mean, not making an excuse, but not significant to anyone. Garfield was off significantly. Lincoln was off nearly 10 percentage points. And Liberty was off about 13 percentage points. No, it doesn't look good. And we have to reevaluate what we're doing and make some progress there.
So why is 5th grade so much different than the other grades?
We have heard that 5th grade test, cut scores were based at more 7th to 8th grade level. But I don't know how that explains the state. The state outperformed us, most of our schools, five of our schools. And it would be across the state, not just for Pona City Public Schools. Okay, then we're coming to science. And I went ahead and put the free and reduce rate so that you'll know. In 2017, we had results from science, and we were 2 points off the state. Then in 2018, last year, we were 10 points off the state average. And then in 2019, we were 12 points off the state average. And that was our most significant point at which we were off the state average. So we're really going to analyze what we do with science. You know, we do the science kits. And one thing that we've talked about today is as we go up in the years, each year, we have more and more teachers, and you all have heard me say this, that 12% of our teachers are emergency certified. And the science kits, we believe, are excellent hands-on experiences for our students. But it takes a master teacher to make those hum. They're a lot of work, and a lot of our emergency people are trying to manage the classroom. Now, if you look back here at Liberty, look how far out of their peer group they are in 2017. They had 52% of their students proficient. I called the teacher that had the highest proficiency rate at Liberty. It's Katie Thomason. She is our principal at Garfield this year. And I asked her, "What'd you do?" She used the kits. She used Study Island Science, and she was an engaged teacher, a project-based teacher. So she designed units to correlate with the standards. At Roosevelt, the teacher is Elena Dingus, and she's one of our master teachers. And she studies the standards and makes sure that if the kit doesn't cover the standards, she will pull in resources that do cover the standards. And that takes a master teacher to make that hum. So we're really going to take a look at what we do with science because I just can't defend the data. That may be that we enhance what we already do or move to a different type of curriculum. Or maybe use our kits as enrichment because they are great hands-on kits for our students. Okay, here's our ELA comparison for 6th, 7th, and 8th. And I put the free and reduce rates. They're really close to the state. When all of our kids come together, we're really close to the state average in regard to poverty rates. If you'll look at our 6th grade, we improved in ELA from 18 to 19. The state dropped. In 7th grade ELA, we dropped again. We're just 2 points off. And I will have to tell you, I was nervous at the beginning of the school year when we had four of our five 7th grade ELA teachers that are brand-new teachers because teaching is an art and a science, and you get better with experience. So I'm thankful that it's not that far off the state average. And we tracked that data, and that's exactly where we thought the data would be. 8th grade went down in ELA, and the state went down a few points as well. As far as math, West Middle School went up in 6th grade.
ELA go down because we dropped that one unit over there?
Which unit?
That team.
At East?
No. Well, that's right. That was at East. That was at West.
That was at West, uh-huh.
10% is a big drop.
Uh-huh. We are adding that team back in at West, and you know that. We're adding another team back in, actually two teams. So we're four spots. Math, we did well in all areas. The state was the only area that dropped. And that's just by 2 percentage points. 8th grade science, it was our second most significant drop from 40% to 33%. I think 12 percentage points in 5th grade science, 7 in East Middle School science. And then I think our next greatest drop was 6 percentage point. The state maintained in science from 18 to 19. We don't have 17 results like I did on elementary sites because there was a correction error with our testing. So we only showed one student at East that was full academic year. So we just don't have accurate data. So, any questions about our test scores? And I can talk to you about what we're going to do moving forward. Okay, some of the things, if you were at our Certified Back-to-School Assembly, you've heard some of this. We definitely have an academic pillar, and that's all. Students are prepared to live and work in a global society. And now that hopefully the state testing doesn't change, doesn't change companies, doesn't change cut scores, we can actually watch our growth. So our goal is to increase our growth percentages each year. And as you know, each of our schools, with the exception of Poh High, have a growth rate. And when I shared our report card information with you last time, I didn't have a stacked chart like this. But you can see the growth rate of the district. Roosevelt came in the top, 76% growth. And this is based on the students that have taken a test in elementary, how they've grown from year to year from the test, 3rd, 4th, or 5th. If we get another student from anywhere in the state of Oklahoma, that test score will come with them and be counted toward their growth. Roosevelt had huge growth. Garfield, Lincoln, then East. And if you'll notice, these are a lot of our schools, if you look at Garfield and Lincoln specifically, that typically come in toward the bottom of the proficiency rates. And we would expect to see a lot of growth from schools that scored low on proficiency rates. Union maintained a C. The state was a C. West Middle School, C. Woodlands, C. Trout, these are typically our higher performers. And when you're higher performing, it's hard to show as much growth. This one, I'm very disappointed in. Liberty should have been up here with Lincoln and Garfield in their growth rates. Their proficiency rates were not good, and their growth needed to be a lot better. But our principal at Liberty this year is Lloyd Cox, who was at Garfield. And you all know that Garfield has really shown a lot of growth after the, since the past few years since Lori's been on the team. I think this is her, she completed her sixth year with us. Poh High doesn't have a growth rate because we just do the ACT for the state testing. So we measure graduation rate. Poh High, 92%, which is really, really good. And we think that a lot of the progress has been with counselors tracking those credits more and with Wildcat Academy and Team Pep. We have a lot of graduates coming out of those programs. The state growth rate was a C. So our goal is to increase these growth rates. And hopefully, we have a target that's not moving for a few years. That's our hope. We also developed some cultural pillars, and I'm not going to read all these to you. If you're at our assembly, you know this. We were really working hard on maintaining a positive working and learning environment because we want to keep our teachers here. And if we have teachers who are experienced and attend our professional development and continue to grow, it's just going to promote academic success. So we took a look at our data. But before we did, we set a goal, and we wanted to reduce the number of teachers who leave the district by 10% each year. Now, we excluded retirement or spouse transfer. That's something that you just can't help. You know, you have to leave. And sometimes people are just, teachers are just ready for retirement. So we excluded retirement and spouse transfer. And when we first collected our data in July of 2018, we had lost 44 teachers for reasons other than retirement or spouse transfer. And then, when I collected the data from Curtis again in July of this year, we had only lost 31 teachers. Actually, that should be 33 because I didn't count the counselor. I went backwards. And so that should be 33. We had 11 teachers less than July of 2018. So we lost 25% fewer teachers for reasons other than retirement and/or spouse transfer. So that's a success, moving in the right direction. Our other cultural goal was to promote and build good school spirit and eliminate barriers for all of our kids to be involved in a positive activity. We don't want our kids to be involved in negative activities, so we want them in our positive extracurricular. And you know, we took a lot of steps to do that with all becoming the Wildcats, our Spirit Nights, the football players greeting the kids at the doors. We've, without a doubt, we have exposed our kids to the Wildcat era. And our goal was to increase the number of students participating by 10% each year. And I first collected the data in February of 2018. We had 1,175 out of our 2,418, 6th through 12th graders. That's 49% participating in at least one extracurricular activity. By May of this year, on the last day of school, I had Joe pull that data again. We had 485 kids versus 485 students more. So we had 1,660 out of 22, 27. So 74% in just one year of our students are participating in an extracurricular activity. So without a doubt, we were happy with those two results. If you were at our Back-to-School Assembly, you know our cultural focus for the 19-20 school year is the Wildcat Way. And we're going to focus on the Wildcat Way just so that we'll have a common language and a characteristic of all Wildcats. Each one of the letters of the word Wildcat stands for a characteristic. And I won't go through those with you, but our teachers and our staff are doing a lot to incorporate the Wildcat Way. And we've had the Wildcat Way for two years now. But when we did the Wildcat of the Week Awards at the high school, you may have seen that on Facebook. Our partners at Team Radio helped us with that. I would always do a quiz, and our students didn't know what the Wildcat Way was. I knew them. Mr. Dilbeck eventually learned them. And then in our last Ad Council in May, our administrators didn't know. And I kind of thought, "Why don't they know?" Well, that's my fault. We're going to focus on the Wildcat Way. And you just wouldn't believe all the things that our teachers and our staff have done to incorporate the Wildcat Way from anywhere, from changing their creed, to doing things in their assembly, to having awards. One teacher sent me some cards that she made. It was actually from Lincoln, and I've got a Lincoln teacher in here today. And she drew, she had a picture of students improving, of students demonstrating work ethic, of students demonstrating a positive attitude. So just a non-verbal of the Wildcat Way characteristics. Another thing that we're going to focus on at all the sites is respect. And not only to receive respect from students, but I've been a teacher for a long time, and you've got to give respect to receive some respect. So our principals are working on that. How do we talk to our kids? How do we greet our kids? How do we welcome them? And what are the expectations for our students? Also, one way to work on respect, I really want to work on pride in site appearance. And when we moved to this building, I will say, from 111 West Grand, you just feel different where you take pride in your building and the building's nice. You know, when we first moved in here, I used to like to come up here on the weekends and work because it was just an inviting place to be. And we're doing some things at all of our sites to update the appearance at our sites, most specifically at the high school. We're doing a facelift in the Commons. That's our area that most of our patrons see. And just needed to have some cleanup done. And Mr. Smith had the windows cleaned. They look a lot better. There are some windows that have the seal broken, and we can't do anything about that until the next bond election, so. But we've purchased some blinds to go over an area where the stage is in the Commons. And we've taken everything off the walls. And we're going to put the logos, like they're in the back of the room, huge ones, at Poh High. We're doing some tree work between the how- We're doing some tree work between the hall building and the concert hall, and some tree work up front. And they were here on Friday, Mr. Smith, and it looks really good. Academic focus, you know, you think, what's our most fundamental skill? Our most fundamental skill is reading, so we're going to focus on reading practice. And coming from an educator, we know lots of research about reading. And I'm not talking about reading instruction, just practicing reading a book. I typically don't have time to read books during the school year, but I read some books over the summer just because I didn't have evening activities. And the research says that fifteen minutes per day seems to be the tipping point in which students show gains. And it seems like they're not getting fifteen minutes a day to practice reading at their zone of proximal development, or even at their enjoyment level. Thirty to sixty minutes, obviously, would, the research shows you get the most substantial gains, but the average student reading time on their own, not instruction, just practice, is seven minutes a day. And I told this to our administrators, what if the national champion Poh High steppers practice seven minutes a day? You know, so we've taken some measures at the sites to get our kids reading at least fifteen minutes a day, and we would like thirty to sixty minutes. But we also need to develop the love of reading with our students. Here's a little chart that comes from Reading Renaissance. Most kids, fifty-four percent of kids in the United States, read less than fifty-four minutes a day, eighteen percent read thirty minutes or more, and twenty-eight percent read fifteen to twenty-nine minutes. So the vast majority aren't reading the number of minutes to even improve in our most fundamental skill. So we're working on that as a district as well. Also, as a district, as far as our academic focus, we want to have improved attendance rates. We had chronic absenteeism grades on our school report cards, so we can really track attendance. And I think I did a board report on our attendance. But as a district, out of about forty-eight hundred students, twenty percent of our students had seventeen absences or more, which is designated as chronically absent, ten percent of the school year. We had one hundred and sixty days, so students were chronically absent, actually, if they missed sixteen point seven days of school. But we had twenty percent of our students that missed days, seventeen days or more, for things other than an extracurricular. Those are excluded. So I've talked to you about our attendance plan, and there's a city ordinance. And I will tell you that we know without a shadow of a doubt that a punishment isn't going to work. So our sites are coming up with a lot of incentives to encourage attendance. And we are going to avoid invoking that city ordinance at all rates, but if we have to, we have to. There will be a committee available, so if parents don't agree with our decision, should it get to that point, then the committee can make that decision. But we realize there are extenuating circumstances. Here are our attendance rates, and typically it stacks up with the poverty rates. Woodlands had an A with ninety-six percent. Garfield had a B in attendance. And I'm telling you, Lloyd Cox, who was our principal at the time, worked that attendance program. She kind of did her own thing with attendance, and she would report parents to the DA, which is neglect if they don't bring their kids to school. And you can see that her attendance rate was much higher than a lot of our schools. Union had a good attendance rate, ninety-three percent B. Trout, ninety-two. The state's attendance rate is eighty-seven percent. Then Roosevelt, eighty-six. Liberty, Lincoln, West, East, and the high school drop off. One thing that I can tell you, at our secondary schools, suspensions count toward attendance. So we typically have more suspensions, out-of-school suspensions at the secondary level. Suspensions will not count toward the city ordinance, that's a double punishment. So if we suspend, that will go on our chronic absenteeism rate. We also are going to meet with our principals and talk about suspensions. We also can enroll our secondary students in PCVH, Plonka City Virtual High School, if they're on suspension too. And then finally, our behavioral focus is, we are really going to focus on cell phones. And I'll talk to you about our current practice versus our changes. I'm sure you've seen our press release, and I've talked to the board about this. Currently, our West students could have their phones in the morning, in the opening assembly, and during lunchtime, but not in classes. And what we're going to do at West and East is the cell phones are in the backpacks all day. They can have them after they leave school or before they come on campus. We're going to make sure that if parents need to communicate with students, that we will pull out all the stops to make sure that happens. At the high school, when I first started thinking about our cellphone policy, and I'm just going to shoot straight with you why we're making this policy, we had so many issues with school cell phones, and I've talked to you about some of them. And we shouldn't have to be combating these issues, and our students don't need to be distracted for checking their status, their social media. We need to focus on school. This is a behavioral focus, but to me, I think it's going to help academically too. Might help with our attendance because we won't have as many suspensions because of things that happen with cell phones. I first talked to Thad about this, I talked to all of our secondary principals about it, and he said it's going to be hard for him to manage. At the high school, three stories, huge building, how's he going to make sure that students don't have their cellphone? And I believe in gradual release of responsibility. So at the high school, the students can have their cell phones between classes and at lunch, before school and after school, but from bell to bell, cell phones have to be turned off and stowed. And is it going to be some work to maintain this? Yes, but we're going to be proactive rather than reactive on some of the issues that we had with cell phones. So we've got a lot of goals this year, and I talked to our principals about it last year, and they were all in, and they've all done a lot of work planning for these areas to focus upon this school year.
What do you do on the phones if they do that?
What we'll do is we'll take the phone and then have a parent or a guardian pick that up. And then if it becomes a major issue, we may ban the device from the site altogether. We're not going to do that on the first rattle out of the hatch, though. It's going to be the hardest probably on our seventh and eighth graders because they were used to having phones. Our elementary kids didn't have phones. It's not, it's not an issue at the elementary site. We're going to follow the same standards as we do at East and West at our elementaries. But most of the elementary sites have their students complete a form, and they have to keep them in the office. Not many of our elementary students carry a cellphone. They might have one, but they don't bring it to school.
I like it.
We've gotten a lot of positive response on the cellphone policy. Either people love it or hate it, and there hasn't been just a lot of negative. I've got more emails on this than anything, saying it's about time, thank you. We have cyber bullying, we have all kinds of things that happen on cell phones. And we had so many issues. Last year, at the end of the year, we had an incident, and it was just like, I'm not doing this on my watch. They, we can't stop it. Parents still allow cell phones at home, but we can certainly curb what happens at And that's it, unless you have any questions.
Anybody have any questions?
No, it's good.
I mean, I've got to say, obviously, I'm disappointed when I see red. I'm obviously disappointed when I see us below state average.
We are too.
Because for any of us that are either parents or grandparents, if your kid brought home a grade card that looked like our grade card, there would be changes made in the household. I mean, when you're below state average, that's just not good. So hopefully, it will be better next year. I don't know, were the tests taken before or after the ten days of missed instruction last year?
Well, right after. We didn't miss instruction last year. These were nineteen results. It would have been the eighteen results that were.
Okay, the eighteens, okay. Well, that makes it even worse then.
It does.
Because eighteen, I mean, you missed ten days of instruction. The kids aren't going to learn as much as if they had ten more days of instruction. So that makes it even a bigger delta between the eighteens and the nineteenth. Okay, enough of that.
We've got plans in place, and you know what? If it's not working, we've got to be willing to research and grow.
Okay, number five, consent agenda includes three things. The agenda with commentary, minutes from the last meeting, and the contracts under ten thousand. Again, I've tried to summarize these. There were thirty items under ten thousand dollars. I'll hit a few of the high ones here. We're having some tree removals up at the high school. Shelley talked about site, pride. We're making some major changes, south side of the high school, the north side of the high school, particularly the south side toward the concert hall. We're removing a couple of big trees, some smaller trees. Also, Keith Lee's spending about, we're spending about eight or nine thousand dollars with him to clean up that long walkway between the two, and I think it's going to look really good. She had mentioned that we're putting some blinds, some window cleaning, and some shades in the common area, about three thousand dollars worth. There were nine onsite professional behavior change agreements that we have to approve to allow these people, and there are no charges to the district, to come into the district to do the various work. And most of this, I believe Amy's paid for by the state and/or individuals, but I think it's mainly state and federal pays for most of these, don't they? We had an agreement with Chandra Freeman for some behavioral intervention consultation. We couldn't find anybody to do that. We had thirty-six hundred dollars worth with Gail Learning, which is used in the libraries for the teachers. It's primarily, it has to do with opposing viewpoints on assaids organizations or activities. Activity funds, we had some for the percussion music for the band. We finally came to terms with the country club for golf and tennis for second semester. Our golf players, both boys and girls, and junior high for the whole year, junior high will be at Lew Wentz. And the varsity high school teams for first semester will be at Lew Wentz. We made agreements with them. We've got a grant from the Oklahoma Wildlife Department. We had approved last month trap shooting out at the FFA barn, and so there was some funding that has to be done to buy some clay pigeons and some various pieces of equipment needed. And again, the Oklahoma Wildlife Department will be coming in, doing safety training on that. We had a fingerprinting service. We had lightning hit, I believe, both West and the softball field, so we're putting a new sound system in to the softball field for thirty-five hundred dollars. I figured you'd like that. We have an agreement with Tru- Propane for the vehicle that we got, what, half price? Didn't we get it for half price, Brett? We paid half, and the grant paid half, but we have to obviously have propane to make it run. West intercom system, I believe, also got hit with lightning for fifty-four hundred dollars. Then we had a thousand dollars repair there. Wells Plumbing, and I did not understand what a fire riser was at West, but they had to dig out a whole bunch of stuff, and there was a whole lot of bad plumbing work underground in the concrete. That I do know. So we had to pay about five thousand there, and we had three royalty fee agreements. Which, by the way, I did notice, Mr. Gary Bracken, Walmart has our throws again.
They do.
For sale out there.
Look, it is not our logo because I had about.
It's awful close to it if it isn't.
It's awful close to it. I had about five pictures sent to me. Does Walmart have an agreement?
Okay, so it's not our logo?
It's close, but it's not.
It's the closest copycat I've ever seen in my life, then. It's only nineteen dollars for one of their throws, though.
That's pretty ugly to do that instead of helping us out, you know what I mean?
Well, that's.
Yeah, I was in there and noticed those and.
Yes, I got some pictures.
I thought it was our logo.
Saw that they had doctored it to technically copy stealing it.
So does anybody have any question about any of the consent items? If not, I will look for a motion to approve five point oh, one, two, and three.
I have motion.
We have a motion from Nancy and a second from?
Me.
David. Comments or questions? Call for the vote.
David Kincaid?
I'm sorry.
Say aye.
Aye.
Robin Riley?
Aye.
He's looking at the Walmart logo, sweetie, Tru.
Nancy?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item six, action is going to be required for the following district financial reports. There is about a million and a half dollars worth of these. These are the normal monthly encumbrances that we have to approve the reports for. Then there was the, some requests for raffles, booster club, not much, couple out-of-town trips, treasures reports, and a ratification of approval of payroll, which we will talk about in a executive session, and then we'll have a statement on the approval or disapproval of the payroll and the changes to the contract when we come out of executive session. So with that, I'd look for a motion to approve item six, A through P with Q excluded, because we'll have a separate fine item for it.
I'm going to do six, A through.
P.
What?
P.
P, excuse me.
You have a motion? Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second from Judy. Comments or question? Call for the vote.
Judy Tru?
Aye.
Nancy Zimmershey?
Aye.
Robin Riley?
Aye.
David Kincaid?
Aye.
Number two under six, consider and take action to approve or not approve the library deregulations for EM Trout and Union Libraries for a couple of school years.
Ratification of payrolls, that necessarily didn't get negotiated.
Okay, that's just approving the payroll.
Oh, that's the payroll, that's not the.
That's not the proposed.
Changes?
Correct. We'll bring that out after.
Okay, so I now need a motion to approve six point one, item Q.
I approve.
Approval of the standard payroll. A motion from Nancy.
Second.
A second from David. Call for the vote.
Can you hold on just one second?
Sure. I didn't remember seeing that one before. Is that a new line item? I don't remember seeing that one before.
It just looks different with our new.
That's why I thought it was the changes.
Okay, motion one.
Nancy, second from David.
Okay, Judy Tru?
Aye.
Nancy Zimmershey?
Aye.
Robin Riley?
Aye.
David Kincaid?
Aye. Okay, number two, basically, we don't have a certified librarian for Trout and Union. Last year, they split their time between the two, so this year, we're hiring two full-time assistants for those two. But to make that happen, we have to decertify those two, deregulate those two schools.
They're actually supervised by a certified librarian.
Right, but we don't have a certified librarian in the building.
Correct.
Is that clear, Smud? Anybody?
That was clear.
I need to decertify.
It's part of our accreditation standards to have a certified librarian. They're so few and far between, the state offers deregulation options.
And it'll actually save us a little bit of money versus having a certified.
We'd love to have a certified librarian, but.
They're not around.
You want to go back?
No, I don't want to go back.
Okay, you sure?
Yeah.
Okay.
Too senile.
So I'd look for a motion to approve number two.
I'm going to approve number two.
Have a motion from David and a second from?
Me.
Judy.
Judy. I have to do this.
That's all right. Call for the vote.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mr. Kincaid?
Aye.
Mrs. Tru?
Aye.
Mrs. Zimmershey?
Aye.
Motion carries. Number three, consider and take action on agreement with Tamara Wink to provide physical therapy services. This is the one for the full year. Last month, we approved a summer arrangement with her. This is for the full school year because we can't find one of these either, a physical Look for a motion to approve number three.
Who does she treat?
Students, if it's on their IEP, required for physical therapy.
Okay.
I'll make a motion for six point three.
Motion from Judy.
I'll second it.
And a second from Nancy. Call for the vote.
Mrs. Tru?
Aye.
Mrs. Tru?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mrs. Zimmerstein?
Aye.
Dr. Kincaid?
Okay, number four, motion and vote to convene into executive session for the following purposes, to discuss the possible termination, reassignments, resignations, and employment of personnel on the attached detailed personnel report, and to discuss negotiations, to discuss confidential conversations with the board's attorney concerning pending claims and litigation. And I believe we need to have an executive session. Do I have a motion? Move to executive session.
I move to go to executive session.
Motion from David and a second from?
Nancy.
Nancy. Call for the vote.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mrs. Tru?
Aye.
Mrs. Zimmerstein?
Aye.
Dr. Kincaid?
Aye.
Motion carries. We're now in executive session. Minutes of the executive session were kept by the board, minutes clerked, and will remain confidential. Consider and take action on recommendations for terminations, reassignment, go back in regular session, and employment personnel per attached detailed board report. Do I have a motion to approve number seven?
I move to approve number seven.
And a second from Nancy.
I'll second. Okay, David?
Aye. Did she say aye?
No, okay. Robin Riley?
Aye.
Judy Tru?
Aye.
Nancy Zimmerstein?
Aye.
David Kincaid?
Aye.
Motion carries. Number eight, one thing Zach's probably interested in, consider and take action on the negotiated agreement with Plonka City Public Schools Association of Classroom Teachers for the 2019-2020 school year pending ratification by the ACT. It's my understanding your ACT has approved it, and with that, Shelley will tell you about it.
Okay, so, what we're going to do for certified teachers, the, the legislation this last session lent itself for a minimum of a $1,220 average raise. So, what we could have done is front-loaded the salary schedule or back-loaded. We wanted all of our teachers to get the same raise. There was also some additional funding in the formula for resources. We're, we have lots of resources, so we wanted to put all of our money that we are getting from the state into salaries. So, we're going to add $1,600 to the base for all teachers, plus give a step, and we're going to give our support staff a step and a raise. So, their support staff and raise will be about $750. Compared with their $1,250 last year, it gives them $2,000 over the last two years. With the $1,600 added to the base and the step, teachers will get right at $2,000 more this year.
That's not.
And I'm sure you're okay with that. I figured you would be. Okay. Do we have any new business?
No, we need to vote on that. Yeah, I will motion to approve that.
We have. Motion from Nancy.
And a second from me.
Second from Judy. Call for the vote.
Dr. Kincaid?
Aye.
Robin Riley?
Aye.
Judy Tru?
Aye.
Nancy Zimmerstein?
Aye.
Make Zach's day happy. Any new business?
No new business.
No new business. Need a motion to adjourn.
I have motion. Let's get out of here.